Good morning, welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors work session for Thursday, April 4th, 2019. Just a reminder, a recording device will be used during this meeting, and I will open up for public comment for non-agenda items, and a reminder, rules for conduct of public meetings established by Resolution 2001-08. The time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. I'll open it up for public comment of non-agenda items. Seeing none, we'll move on. Minutes of previous meetings, Board of Supervisors, March 21st, 2019.
Motion that they be approved is submitted.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Planning Commission, March 6th, 2019.
Motion they be approved is submitted.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Full business. Results of the street tree survey at the estates of Dallin Forge. Luke?
That's me. Good morning. Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a follow-up from your last public meeting. Let me do a little background on the problem that we've discovered in our survey. There are separate builders and separate developer for the Estates at Dallin Forge project. The developer is Metropolitan Development Group, and the builder is D.R. Horton. D.R. Horton, at closing, has in a package that they're selling as an option to homeowners for enhanced landscaping. What has happened in the vast majority of cases that you heard about at our last meeting is that there are homeowners who have opted into that landscaping package, and then when D.R. Horton goes out to put the trees that are shown in the township's land development plan in the ground, there are already trees in the front yard. So what we were hearing from most of the residents was, "We already have trees, we don't want more." I'm going to kind of summarize what would be in a revision should the board choose to accept a revision of the plan. There are about 13 homes that are affected. The total number of street trees, and I'm using street trees in the broadest possible sense, this would be between the curb and the front of the house, would be the same before and after the change. All the trees would be those species that are shown in the township's acceptable list. The exact location would vary within lots, the number of trees on individual lots would vary, and the species of the tree would vary from the approved plan. So there's a team of three people at this point. Representative D.R. Horton, newly-elected member of the HOA, and myself could put together a, we'll call it an ASBILT, of the landscape plan that reflects what's in the ground, what individual homeowners want removed, and what they intend to add. I guess, based on that summary, my question to, I guess directed best to Kristin, is that an amendment of the plan, or is that a change order?
I'm not totally following what you said, because you said that D.R. Horton is selling additional landscaping to people, so if they're selling additional landscaping, that's adding trees, not subtracting trees, so I'm missing something.
What he's suggesting, I think, is, Kristin, is that they not plant all of the trees that the plan requires because of the landscape package.
And I think that's, I think that's a change. I guess it depends on how many we're talking about. We're talking about 50 trees, I think that that warrants asking the board to come back and approve an amended plan. If it's five trees, you know, can you agree that that can be a change order and then just document it through a motion of the board? I think that's the case. I think, I think we need to understand the quantity.
Sounds to me like we're talking about 13 to 26 trees, somewhere in that range.
Thirteen or so lots, I would say, of the affected area, we're talking about 78 trees.
Seventy-eight.
Yes, so...
Pretty significant amount of trees, and it's then not, it would be something that, if they had suggested that at the outset before the board approved the plan, it would have required a waiver. Actually, your landscaping section, it's in your zoning, and it gives the board the ability to modify it if you think that there's sufficient, you know, basically if the overall landscaping package provides, you know, what it is that the board's looking for by way of landscaping. So I think that that should come back as far as maybe not a plan change necessarily. Well, you should have a plan that you're looking at, that you can say, "Yes, we agree, we would have granted this modification through the power and zoning ordinance." Things like 399, 79B, or something like that, I was actually looking at it yesterday. So I think that that should come back for a board approval.
And I think part of the problem that we're going to have with this, Luke, because I drove through that neighborhood after the last meeting, was some of the trees that were planted as part of the landscape plan, now, I didn't have the plan in front of me, so I'm speculating to some extent on this, but some of the trees that were planted as part of the landscaping plan are trees that are closer to the house and don't really address the trees that the plan would require. So by eliminating those trees, you are going to change the plan. And the other thing I'll say is, after hearing your explanation and what's going on there, if we're going to delete any trees from this plan, my position is going to be, if we can use them at Community Park or Bonneville Mill, they're going to plant them there instead of in the neighborhood.
Yeah, that's great.
Well, if I might clarify, I don't expect any net change in the number of trees.
Yeah, but it's a question of, so in effect, they're, they have an obligation to put in a certain number of trees, the term we've been using is "street trees." They're telling their resident, their buyers, they're selling the buyers on an enhancement package, so now the buyers are paying for the street trees that they're obligated to put in. And if that's the case, my position is going to be, they're going to still provide the street trees, we're just going to put them somewhere else.
Is MDG providing the street trees that were required by the plan, and then D.R. Horton is providing the additional trees if there's an enhanced package purchased?
No. In both instances, it's D.R. Horton, both the township's street trees and the additional package they're selling to residents.
So I agree with Jay then, that, I mean, it sounds like they're making them pay for more, but then the property owner's saying, "But I don't want the ones that are up against the street." Well, you don't have a choice about that, D.R. Horton, that was required by the plan.
Okay.
And if you had done the ones that were required by the plan, maybe you wouldn't have been able to sell this enhanced package and get more money, because they wouldn't have wanted both. People probably didn't understand what was required by the Land of Allen Plan, if that had just gone in, they would have saved themselves some money on the purchase price.
But I think they're different trees, because when I went through the neighborhood, you can sort of tell what we would consider "street trees," and then they have a tree off the corner of the house. Well, yeah, there's going to be interference when they mature, but the one, the landscaping tree by the house doesn't really meet what we're trying to achieve with having street trees.
Right, and I don't know your ordinance well enough to know, are people prohibited from removing a street tree? Because you won't have any say in the matter if somebody gets this enhanced package and the tree's closer to their house, if they decide after three years they don't like that tree, or it can just come down whenever they want, versus if your ordinance has a provision that a street tree must remain to stay compliant with your plan, and now those are the ones that are not going to be planted, I agree with Jay, you're not achieving the purpose of your ordinance.
I feel like "street tree" in this case is perhaps not the best choice of words. To my way of thinking, a street tree is a tree that's located between a curb and a sidewalk, and within the right-of-way of a township and the property of that municipality. Of the 13 or so houses that I've mentioned, only four total are on roads that will be dedicated to the township, so the rest are adjacent to the, what will be dedicated to the HOA as a road. And furthermore, even if they were built according to plan, I wouldn't call them "street trees," I would call them "trees in the front yard."
But, all right, so, further background, Luke, we used to put them between the sidewalk and the street, and Matt will tell you that the problem is when they mature, they become a problem because they're too close to the street. So that's why our "street trees" have been moved back away from the road.
Yeah, they also cause heaving of the sidewalks a lot of times, and all kinds of stuff.
You've been, you sat here through the whole Coburnson Run situation, so you know what the problem is with those trees when they mature. But the whole intent of the landscaping portion of the ordinance is that when these people build a development in a cornfield, you want it to look, eventually you want it to look like a mature area with shade trees, and that's different than having a bunch of homes in a cornfield.
Okay.
But it sounds like, the question was, how do they go about approving it? I think it is something that, once they put a plan together of what they'd like to see, and you can have, you know, a visual of comparing what should have been, and what was approved versus what they're asking for, that has to come to the board, for a board to sign off on that.
Yes. At this point, D.R. Horton has in their office the largest version of the affected areas landscaping plan that I can print, and they have a red and a green pen, and they're going to go through and adjust every single affected lot. I think the question that I had today before having presented that is, is what is that? Is it a field change or is it an amended plan? And I'm hearing an amended plan.
Yeah.
It depends on the scope, so...
Seventy-eight trees seems to be a big scope.
Yeah.
I think, from your standpoint right now, what you have to relay to them is, show us the plan, and then we'll tell you whether it's something we can just sign off on, or we have to do something more extensive.
Okay. I think, and I appreciate that, and I have my marching orders, that's clear. I think D.R. Horton's perspective is, if we're going to sit down with all the affected homeowners and sketch out a plan that makes everybody happy, they'd like to know that there's some assurance that they've gone through this exercise, and at the end, the plan is going to be approved.
Well, it's hard for the board to make that until they see the magnitude.
They created the problems, they got to work their way out of it. They can't get advance approval for something we haven't seen.
Well, I don't, yeah, well, perhaps I chose words poorly, I didn't mean to say "advance approval."
I think you accurately portrayed what they're after, which shouldn't happen.
All right. Well, thank you, I have direction. At your next board meeting, I will present the amended plan.
Okay, Luke, and why don't you continue on with your discussion for the components of the 2020-24 waste hauler contract?
Sure. So this is presented to you for the first time. This is a table showing the big variables in any plan that we would bid out for waste hauling for the contract beginning December 1st, 2020. It's staff's intention to advertise this in June and to select a bidder during our budget cycle, which would be September. Before we go and write this, though, this is the opportunity to talk about the major variables that we would tweak in a new contract. There are three of these that I'd like to draw your attention to today, and again, I don't expect any decisions, this is just a preliminary presentation of what may change between the two contracts. The first one is the ownership of the recyclables. Our current contract puts all of the risk of profit or loss of the value of the recyclables on the hauler. They take title of the recyclables at curbside, they decide where they're routed, and they take the profit or loss of the materials they collect. Since the last contract, the recycling market is not nearly as strong as it was previously, and so I suspect if we bid this out today, we would get extremely high bids, because the hauler would want to mitigate their risk of not being able to move these materials. I'm suggesting in the new contract, we separate out the tipping fee for recyclables from the monthly rate we pay for the collection of materials at curbside. Second variable that may change between the two contracts is, I would like this new contract to contain an option for the purchase of trash containers, and that those trash containers be financed over the first three years of the contract. Right now, homeowners provide their trash containers. I think it would be, that the community would be better served by having a standard-size container that's ready for automation, pick up at the curb by the hydraulic arms. I think that cuts down on litter. I also think it cuts down on disputes about an appropriate amount of volume that will be picked up each week. Basically, it's going to be like the US Postal Service, if it fits, it ships. If you've, if you've got more than what will fit in a 96-gallon container, that's too much trash.
Let me interrupt you real quick on that point.
Sure.
On that point, I got a, I was one of those guys that would put out three trashcans, and the waste hauler dropped off a hopper and said, "Will you please use this instead of the three cans, it's easier for us?" So I think sometimes it's, they're willing to give the trashcans or want us to use the trashcans more than we want to use it, because it helps them out, too. In this case, I saw at least 10 up my road dropped off with tags on it saying, "Please use this instead of your regular trashcan."
I know from a driver's perspective, they would vastly prefer being able to use the automated arm for collection. What I can't tell you as a homeowner is, at the end of the contract with Republic Services on December 31st, 2019, that Republic Services won't come back and pick all those up-
Right.
-if they're not the winning bidder. That relationship that they have with the individual residents on the route has nothing to do with the township. I would presume that that cart remains the property of Republic Services.
The one suggestion I would have, the way you have it characterized, prefer to finance over the first three years, I think maybe that the bid specs should be that there's one bid with them providing cans and one bid without them providing cans.
Correct. I saw it...
Rather than, you're saying find, I don't want to, I just want to see if there's a difference between them, because I agree with Kyle that it should make sense to them to provide those cans.
And the one they provided, it wasn't brand-new, it looked like it was slightly used, but that also might make a difference in how you word it, because they would be happy to drop off all their recycled old ones and give them to you for free, but I would say, you know, in the contract, if you write it, to provide new, not necessarily slightly used or used.
I would like them to be township branded and the same manufacturer as our recycle carts.
Or numbered and such.
Exactly. So I'm not visualizing them loaning carts to residents, I'm thinking about us purchasing carts for residents.
Well, I'm thinking that, as part of the contract, they provide the carts, that's the last bid, and then with the, well, do the contract without the carts, do the contract option that they provide all the carts and see what the difference is.
Okay.
But make it township branded, as you said.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And the...
Know what the carts cost, right?
Right. They're about $60 each.
Yeah. So for a three-year contract, you're looking at $20 a year for carts.
And then the third variable that I'm considering, suggesting that we change, is the escalator for new housing units. The way that the current contract is worded, there is no adjustment for the number of housing units that we have come online until they've reached a threshold of 10% over the amount in the original bid specs, and then after that, it's at their request. I'd like to change that to just at their request, no more than quarterly. The reality is, while the 10% threshold was very economically beneficial for the township, it didn't in any way stop the, you know, you still get the, "Are we there yet, are we there yet, are we there yet?" From the hauler, from an administrative perspective, they ask, you know, "Have we achieved that threshold?" So you're still doing that, and I'm thinking, you might encourage lower bids if they know that the count is more or less real-time in housing units. This is all crystal ball territory, it may well be that they don't notice that clause and bid low anyway, and then the township gets a really sweet deal. I'm just trying to make this as a desirable contract as I can.
Just out of pure curiosity, Luke, why did you limit it to Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday only?
Well, the problem is primarily to do with holidays. So what happens now is typically Monday is a holiday, and if Trash Day were Monday, it would be intuitive to everybody that the Trash Day is now Tuesday. What's happening is, if Trash Day is Monday, or a holiday is Monday, then your Trash Day is now Friday. And if there's missed collections on Friday night, there's no one in the township to take the call for them to return within 24 hours. And so we've had instances where there's a new driver or a route failed, and we've had trucks out there on a Saturday. I'm trying to get one more business day to correct any problems that may be with the collection, so I'm trying to avoid a Thursday.
Well, I'm just concerned that somebody who's already got contracts that require them to do Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, may not be inclined to bid on it, because they're, they would try to fit it on a Thursday or a Friday instead.
We could keep that worded as before and say, if you're suggesting something other than Thursday, it's you, the winning bidder's obligation to communicate the new date to the residents, which is what the old contract had.
Well, I'm just, I was curious about your reasoning for that, so we can talk about it.
It, we get typically Thursday night and Friday morning are the sporadic angry calls from residents whose trash has been missed, and if Trash Day for any reason is on a Friday, there's no one here to take the call. So again, I expect no action this evening, but I wanted, or this morning, but I wanted to share with you the variables that may change in that. Are there any other thoughts from any other board members on what's in front of you?
I think, I think you're heading in the right direction. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to have a discussion for the road improvements at Horseshoe Pike and Bolinger Road, and East Reesville Road extension from Bonneville Road to Horseshoe Pike.
I don't think that's actually what this is, that's if it's the, it's the East Reesville Road extension, and what, shoot.
I think one of the things I had to suggest at this, brought to the board, so the Pulte settlement agreement for Apple Cross obligated Pulte to contribute $750,000 to the township, and their PennDOT permit requires them to make a road improvement to the intersection of Bonneville and 322.
Right.
The settlement agreement is clear, though, that if there's additional right-of-way that's needed to do that, that's on the township. Obviously, the township is the only party that can, if needed, exercise eminent domain. And there were, and Andy's here to help, because I haven't been involved all the time, but, you know, there have been various meetings with PennDOT as, you know, Pulte, for Apple Cross, as well as then Mapleview had to have meetings with PennDOT, and then NB Homes, now the Weaver Track has had some meetings with PennDOT, and there have been, from what I understand, PennDOT said, "We're not going to issue any more HOPs for road improvements along 322 until the township goes forward with what was supposed to happen at the intersection of Bonneville and 322." Well, that, Pulte is ready, willing, and able, they can't go forward until the additional right-of-way is acquired along the properties, I guess it's the Joe Burns Beverage and the Firehouse.
Yeah.
So, and I know there were discussions and there were meetings, and I just think that sort of died on the vine, and I just wanted, it, there has to be a discussion, because somebody has to give direction back to PennDOT to say whether this is going to go forward or not.
And we did give our direction back to PennDOT, that we were not going to do eminent domain for them, if they wanted to handle it, that was on them, that's how we...
And PennDOT's not going to do that, so...
Well, you know, that's my stance, PennDOT, they created the mess, and they want us to essentially take the bullet for going eminent domain, and at least that was my stance, I'm not in favor of creating eminent domain to help PennDOT out, because they don't want to do it or they're broke.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that that's the consensus of the board, so that when Andy is involved in conversations with PennDOT on the HOP process for NB Homes, I guess, they need to understand what the township's position is, because I saw a review letter that basically said, "PennDOT was not going to issue any more HOPs to another applicant coming in." So basically, they're holding them hostage for things that haven't been done on prior applications. So I just thought there needed to be direction provided so that developers know and your traffic engineer knows.
So my question, Kristin, is, can they do that? And I know they're doing that, but is it...
That's Andy's question. I don't know enough about how that process works. I mean, I don't think...
Well, I don't understand how PennDOT can take the position that they're not going to evaluate totally independent HOP applications because they have an issue with this one HOP application.
I mean, I think, and please jump in, if there's something...
That's what they've indicated, anything that involves a state highway, they can basically shut things down until what's on the books is taken care of. I would, I guess the other thing...
May I interrupt, may I have you use the microphone?
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Andy, I appreciate it.
Yep. The other thing to keep in mind, too, is, what is in the township's approval of the Pulte development? Does this, does any of the approvals apply to the intersection of 322 and Bonneville Road?
It does, I mean, not at that plan, not at that intersection.
You have to be careful, you may be saying one thing to PennDOT, but you might have on the books an approval dependent on these improvements as well, so we might be in a contradictory position here.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but it would be Pulte's responsibility to go to these homeowners or businesses and offer them a fair market value.
No, the settlement agreement said that if you had to acquire a right-of-way, the township would be paying for that, and that, because, that's how the settlement agreement was worked. But they were giving you $750,000, and I'm not sure if that had anything to do with that intersection, but that was a contribution, but I'm almost certain that the settlement agreement said that if any right-of-way was needed, that was going to be on the township to pay for and do the negotiations with the property owner.
I thought the settlement, I thought the 750 was for the East Reesville Road area for the, for the additional housing units that were going to go in. Now, this might be well before my tenure, but I remember having that discussion with, I believe it was Allison, and they wanted to take the estate homes and convert those over to townhomes, and...
That's true.
And I bought, I was, under my assumption, that that agreement was for that section only, not for the 322 corridor.
Right, so I think you're right, I think, I think they're on the hook to do the actual physical improvements to the intersection, whatever that costs, but they can't do that unless there's additional right-of-way acquired from the two properties we talked about.
Correct.
And the settlement agreement puts the onus of doing the actual acquisition, whether it's through, you know, through a negotiation and a purchase agreement, or through a condemnation, the value of the right-of-way was going to be paid for by the township. And that's where we're hung up, because I believe there was a meeting, and the property owner at the time was not, they were concerned about the impact upon their property, but I understood that McMahon, who was dealing with the road improvements, that they were supposed to go back and do an alternative plan, and then go back to that property owner and show them that alternative plan. I don't know if that ever happened.
Hasn't happened.
So the last discussion that I had with Joe Burns Beverage during this was, Pulte had been to them with an offer, they had been to the fire department with an offer, Joe Burns Beverage was not interested at the time with the offer, and they weren't interested in doing it at all. There was, based off of the plan that they had saw and that I had saw, they basically took their parking lot where you could get a tractor-trailer in and out on both sides, and essentially made it one lane in and then a grassy surface, and they said, "How would this work for us?" You know, now all of a sudden, you've cut off all of our deliveries, and I agreed with them. And then at the time, she was also looking at other options for her property. So I think, you know, that's where things fell apart back then, because essentially, and I would agree 100% with them, that their property value, in my opinion, was essentially useless for business, because they have all this parking area, and now it was a quarter or half grass area. And, you know, that's how I recall.
I think, based on the plan I saw, McMahon provided an access to their parking area. I don't recall what the material was to be used, but I assume, because they, that has to be part of the PennDOT permit, it has to satisfy PennDOT requirements as well. So whatever they were doing, I think, was supposed to be bituminous, not, instead of grassy areas, but I'll have to go back and confirm that.
Yeah, that was, again, that was the last plan I saw, and essentially, right now, it's an all-parking area that essentially goes straight up to the building front, and then it was half-grass area and almost like a peninsula that you entered into on the, a single lane or a double driveway, instead of where they have right now, let's just call it, say, 80 or 100 feet of pavement frontage, it was cut down to 40 feet of pavement frontage, and the rest was grass. You can put it right on that, right on that table, and we'll...
I'm trying, Andy. Like me, it's slow this morning.
I don't know if this is the latest... I don't know if this is the latest plan, and then I have another, another version that, and I don't know which one came first anymore because it's been a while. But this is one of the McMahon concepts that shows where the widening would be. And you can see there a driveway that connects to the parking lot. I assume that shaded area, not the yellow shaded, but the parking lot area, the driveway and the few parking spaces there, would be in bituminous, and they're not going the rest of the way into the property to redo the whole parking lot. But it is showing. Way, one lane in, one lane out, with a few parking spaces in the front.
Because of what? Oh, it's the sunlight that's blocking it out.
Yeah, you can turn it that way.
So Andy, I'm sorry, I was fiddling with this thing because it wasn't coming up on the screen. The shaded area is what is being proposed now?
Well, the yellow shading is the, the road widening for PennDOT to take care of the lanes and so forth. That, that is part, would be part of the permit. But you can see off of 322, a driveway for the Burns property. It's showing one lane in, one lane out, with a stop bar, a double-yellow line, and then a few parking spaces facing 322 in the front there. And I'm assuming that that would all be done in bituminous. There's no grassy area unless that exists on the existing lot further on site.
But it looks like the rest of the parking area is unaffected, so it's not really changing.
Correct.
So if, if a truck would still be able to get in here.
But the problem is, you're, and I could be wrong on this, I, I'm trying to envision this in my head, but the problem that I see with this is if there's any cars parked in these spots in the front, truck pulls in, he's not going to the storefront to deliver because he can't get around those cars until they're gone. Now, I understand it's an in-and-out type service there, but I don't know, I just remember the argument being that they, they lost a good portion of their entrance in and out and that it got shrunken, is how I recall the discussion with them.
What's the plus on the legend? The legend, what are the little?
I'm sorry, what?
What do the pluses mean on the legend?
The hatched area in front of that parking spot, in between those new parking spaces and the yellow.
Right here.
The hatched area, that's.
Yeah, there, but there's, there's an area between the parking and 322 that's got all the little pluses.
Oh, that's grass, that, that would be replaced lawn area, so to speak. That's not part of the parking lot, that's between the parking lot and the other road.
But you don't have, with, you just had a curiosity, the current barns?
If, you have to look real close, it's, it's on there in dashed lines. What, what exists is far more.
This is what's.
Is far tighter to negotiate for a truck than what is proposed. Now, once they get on site, I'm not familiar with how their trucks circulate, so maybe there can be an alternative to that, and maybe McMahon is not aware of that either. There is another alternative that I can show you that's not color-coded and so forth, and I don't know which order they came.
Yeah, I, this may or may not, I can't, this was, we're going back three years.
Right.
That's always supposed to be seeded, all the, that's parking lot right, that's ingress and egress to the highway right now. They go right up along the other driveway, like three feet.
That's what I thought, that's what I remember their argument being. They, basically, they went from 100 feet of frontage to 60 feet of frontage.
Yeah.
And that's how.
25 feet.
Yeah, that's how I recall. But I, again, this might have been an updated version.
It doesn't seem, it doesn't seem like it's one, it seems, though, that if the direction was to McMahon, go back and try to take into account their concerns, I'm not sure that's happened. So it's probably worth that happening before you just throw away what was approved as part of this plan.
And just one other. And one other note, PennDOT will not allow a wide-open driveway to remain either. So if you've gotta widen their frontage for something, it's gotta comply with current PennDOT standards, which is basically one lane in, one lane out. Now, to accommodate trucks, maybe there needs to be wider radii on the corners or something like that, but it's, it's gotta be tightened up so that there's a clear point of access rather than a wide-open expansive pavement.
Would PennDOT allow a, a separate driveway in and then the driveway out? Two separate driveways?
They could, it could be looked at, it's not out of the question, it's not the most desirable way to do it, but if you're dealing with an existing property that has to deal with circulation issues, PennDOT will listen.
Yeah, and the only other thing is they may have been up against the gun with the parking spaces because right now, you have ample amount of parking. Once you start shortcutting this and, and you know.
Yeah. It, it sounds like there needs to be more discussion between McMahon and the property owners to try and work it out.
Yeah, and I would say, you guys are the authority that could assist them in making some deals with respect to parking. Now, I mean, we've done that, for example, I'm working with East Coaston on a trail project, we have to acquire easements, and people are saying, "Oh, well, the impervious cover, we're concerned." We don't want that trail to count against us, and we're saying, "We will make sure that that doesn't happen." So I think you have some flexibility in that regard through your, you know, through your, because you're the ones that would ultimately have to approve something. But I just didn't want to die without at least having McMahon go back and try to address their concerns to the extent that they can. And if it does, and at the end of the day, you're still not comfortable, you know, if the Ulrichs still are not comfortable and you're not comfortable exercising eminent domain, which is completely in your discretion, we at least need to go back and say that to PennDOT and figure out what that means for, you know, what was approved and what's coming down the pike.
But that's how it was left the last time, just so you know. We basically said, "No, we're not gonna do eminent domain, and if you guys wanna do it, that's on you," and that's why it fell through the cracks.
And I'd like, I don't know whether we put the onus on PennDOT, but I, I'd like to know what their authority is for.
Holding up.
Holding up this HOP, the other HOPs because of this issue.
The only thing I would say is that haven't all of the reviews that have gone forward taken into consideration the fact that that intersection would have been implied? So it's almost like it was a chain reaction so that they had certain assumptions that they were taking into account as they approved other intersections, and maybe that's what it is. So, again, I don't, I don't know how that works. I don't usually get involved in the HOP, but I think we do need to ask that question, so.
Do we know if they, if they changed the exiting out of here to prohibit left turns? Because with this design and adding another lane in and whatnot, you're gonna have to restrict left turns out of there. We, we almost have.
That might be another issue that's holding it up.
Does this property butt up on Bonneville as well?
Yes, it does.
So you could give them a left out there to come to a light, no?
It's very difficult, it's unfortunately. But if you did two driveways going in, the exit driveway could be designed to be a right-hand turn only. I know people don't follow that, but if it's designed so that it.
If they would allow connection into the food banks.
That's what I was thinking.
Uh, driveway, you'd be able to do it there because they'd have enough room.
Well, that's what I was thinking, is if you would do an access even across, because you can.
That's two drivers up, the flings is the first one.
Right, so you have to cut it, right, but, I mean.
But that's what I think.
Without third lane in there, that's gonna be a huge problem.
Would you be able to, Andy, would you be, and I'm not trying to be a traffic engineer, trust me, but if you went right out, could you get into a left-turn lane and do a U-turn there at the light? Will there be a turn?
No, no, no.
No, that won't.
No, no, no. I don't, I don't think. I don't think U-turns are prohibited, I don't think there's any signage currently, but you'd have to cross the through lane to get into the left-turn lane.
I'll keep my mouth shut.
It's undesirable.
Not safely.
You can do anything, you just make it.
Just trying to be creative.
Ticket.
Be worth a, a call, too, and I forget who the engineer, was it McMahon? Chris Williams.
Williams, yeah.
Thank, wait a minute. No, it's not, it's not McMahon, it's TPD. TPD's doing the.
For Weaver?
Doing a plan for NV. Oh, okay. The Weaver Track. And.
I have to get everybody.
As I recall, this, this was on them to come back with updated traffic counts and a revised plan based on what the Ulrichs' concerns were. And that hasn't happened. And I've asked Sebastian Farrar at least twice about the status of that. As I said, PennDOT's still gonna hold their HOP up until this is resolved. So maybe we need to go back to, to TPD and push this issue. Well, if PennDOT's gonna hold up their access as well, that might be all in the works anyway. Right.
And we had this meeting with the school board, you and I, and Luke, I believe, was there. We had the school board meeting and, and it was also, I think, the, Joe Burns was invited and as well as, you know, everybody else involved, but I think.
They were, in fact, there. It was Pulte, Maple View, and NV Homes.
Right, I remember having.
Here.
All right, so Andy, can you communicate then with those engineers and try to coordinate a meeting to go back to the drawing board, I guess, and see if there's?
I don't even know if we necessarily have to go back to the drawing board. I think we have to sit down with Joe Burns Beverage first and find out what they, you know, didn't like the most. I'm just basing this off of a three-year discussion, you know, three-year ago discussion. And I know, you know, it's probably would be better to start with them. I believe the agreement was already reached with the fire department.
It was.
So.
Yeah, I, I can touch base with Chris and see where it stands on his end, whether he was generating, in the process of generating anything else until this slowed down. I mean, there's one other thing to point out here is if Burns ever wants to develop this property, they're gonna have to do a large part of that yellow stuff that you see up there at their cost. So this project will do a lot of stuff that they won't have to pay for in the future. So there's some benefit to them in going along with this, and like I say, anything they do, PennDOT requirements will apply to their driveways going forward as well. So all of this stuff is gonna come back and get them one way or the other down the road.
I guess my concern is their argument would probably be, again, I'm speculating, "We're grandfathered in, PennDOT already gave us approval. How can they tell us now we have to update our approval that we've already been worked on years and years ago? And could they come back to us after we do this and say, 'Yeah, that was five years ago's approval, now you have to do today's approval.'"
They have, for, number one, they have to satisfy current standards, and number two, things lapse. So if they have a permit and haven't acted on it, everything starts, the clock starts all over with PennDOT after, I think, three or five years.
So his point is that if they go do, try to develop something and their use changes, they, the, whatever approvals they have now for their HOP won't be valid, they'll most likely have to update it and bring it up.
Right, which is frustrating because.
Well, but I guess, you know, time, things change. So maybe since, since your last discussion with them, maybe they've developed more plans in terms of their own development of their property. So again, I think it's important, you're right, have, have a meeting with them.
Yep.
So, that's the direction, okay.
So, so let's leave it as maybe you talk to TBD first and.
McMahon.
And McMahon, and then set that up, and then, then I think we have to go back to the, the roundtable as we had here a couple of years ago with, with, now it's not gonna be the school board, now it's gonna be Sebastian and, and yourself and, and Joe Burns and, and the township, and we'll just try to.
Well, I think there might be a need for an interim step, too, because this is between Pulte, McMahon, so to speak, and the Burns, and it doesn't yet involve NV or the others. They'll come in later. We gotta get this one off the ball and start moving, and then deal with the rest coming down the road. So I, I'm not sure I wanna muddy the waters with a meeting with a bunch of people in it when it's just two parties that have to work this out.
And it may be helpful if somebody on the board could attend, just as a representative.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Township probably needs to be involved because.
I'm happy to be there, I was there for the original one. And then also, we also gotta remember that the other individual who was dealing with this at the time was Billy Krieger, who's no longer there. So now, I, I don't even know if the new project manager for Pulte has, has even gotten involved with this at all.
Right.
So.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, and then the second part of it was where Scott was going. There's also a conversation about East Reeseville Road Extension. In NV's plans, they are showing the part of it that crosses their property that leads to Bonneville Road, is that correct?
No. There, there's two issues. First of all, the township has their Act 209 Transportation Capital Improvements Plan that shows the relocation or the bypass of 322 through a part of the property, which is not reflected on any of the plans NV Homes has, has, has come to the township with. And the township is collecting money to build that at some point, and it might be way on the back burner, but there's no allowance for it with the plan as currently proposed. Second part of that is that road continues across Bonneville Road and what everybody's referring to as the East Reeseville Road Extension. And Pulte, when they redid the property for the townhouses, actually has allowed for a right-of-way in their, within their property to do part of that. Any of the other properties along the way there will do the next one. So NV Homes, since they have access to Reeseville Road, needs to start planning for that as well. I brought up comments about the discussion about putting a roundabout at the intersection of Bonneville Road and Reeseville Road. So things of those nature, of that nature needs to be accounted for where it is directly on their plans. And then in terms of their traffic impacts and whatever their fees would be that we would collect, have to go towards hopefully implementing pieces of the township's plan.
So I'm, I didn't realize that. So the plan that they're gonna come tonight with for conditional use approval basically does not do what the long-range plan for this Reeseville Road Extension calls for.
Right, there, at, at least any plans that I've seen so far have not accounted for the right-of-way for the bypass.
And you don't have a copy of that, a proposed roundabout, do you?
The roundabout itself, I have a sketch that I made, just a red markup, I can show you.
You could, just so I can wrap my head around this.
So, this is Bonneville Road, this is the existing Reeseville Road, the intersection, and then this would be the right-of-way for the East Reeseville Road Extension. So that, that's just a concept of what a roundabout might look like at that intersection. Now, depending on right-of-way and so forth, it can shift a little bit one way or the other to one of the other corners and be off-center a little bit, but for discussion purposes, that'll give you an idea of what a roundabout may look like and how large it needs to be in terms of accommodating all the kind of traffic, you know, trucks and so forth that would go through it.
Okay. What about, we doing sketches?
Who's that?
Sketches?
No, that's not, I think that's not for discussion here. So I'm still not clear on how, I, I'm worried about tonight and what their plan shows with respect to if it does or doesn't achieve what was contemplated as the extension.
Right, if, if the township goes forward with their plan that does not show the bypass of 322, township has a big problem because they're collecting, we're collecting money to build this thing, and there's no accommodation for it any longer.
One section of it.
The, the section.
So this, this is, is gonna be part of the Weaver Track right here? Is that, is that their section?
Can you see that? Okay, here's 322. This is Bonneville Road, Reeseville Road. The Weaver Track is most of this area, and there's the right-of-way for the bypass.
Got it.
So there's a section right through here that involves the Weaver Track.
Okay.
I don't know why it was never brought up. Worst decision.
What would, what would happen if, how would that affect the township's capital improvement plan going forward if that, if we didn't do the Loop Road and, and we did collect?
Well, you're collecting money to do something that can no longer be done, number one, and number two, the township is lacking a plan to address 322. The idea for the Loop Road in the beginning was 322 really needs to be five lanes wide, but with the Village of Guthrie'sville, nobody wanted to provide that wide of a road because one side or the other would probably have to be torn down to accommodate that wide of a road. So the idea was to make, make existing Horseshoe Pike. So, the idea was to make, uh, make existing horseshoe pike more or less one-way northbound, and this bypass road would become the southbound portion of that.
Um, and, and I guess, is there, this, this serpentine going through their property, I know it was talked about, whether or not they were, they were in agreement or not, but could that serpentine not go into their main road travel, so to speak, or, or-
Well, we're talking about moving all of southbound through traffic on 322 onto this road. So, I'm, I'm not sure they, number one, they want all that traffic through their development, and number two, hopefully this becomes a state highway when it's all said and done, and township, and the township no longer owns it, it's maintained by Pendot, so it has to follow Pendot standards, so the curvature of the road, the intersection, then everything. We have to try and make that, uh, satisfy Pendot standards, and it's a very heavy volume of traffic that has to move along at a certain speed. So, the design of the geometry of this road has to be very high-type as opposed to something with sharp turns and things like that in it.
Um, if you don't build the Loop Road from where Proppers is down to Bonsville Road, can we still use the time line to build it from Reeseville Road out to 322, the secondary part? Because right now, NV Homes, there's, there's no way they're gonna do that, that, that bypass to their development, I wouldn't, why would you?
Well, again, there's a two-part answer to that, number one, the money that is collected can still be used for the Eastville Road part, but the township is still collecting money for that part. So, if the township never uses that money, there could be refunds due to all the developers that have paid in, and the, the Act 209 plan has to be revised to accommodate five lanes of 322 somewhere. And the north side, the other side of 322 is pretty much all built out, I don't see how you can do anything over there. So, I'm not sure, there's a, a solution to get all that traffic through Guthrie'sville.
Here's the very question, as we kind of talked about this, I thought we did it banned, we already guys, I thought we decided-
I, I think-
The Weaver track, it wasn't worth a while, but from Bonsville and Reeseville, yes, going out of 322, how they hopefully can do development that might happen along the all the track, we were okay with that. This was something that I had to be, I hope you checked with the table because it wasn't real listening.
I think you're accurate, that, and I think that was what was conveyed to NV, our homes.
So, I guess, Andy, the question was, the money that we would like to put pieces on the Weaver track, technically can we use that money to build the other piece that's gonna go through the village's property and the all the track? And be okay with it not having to be fun money?
And I think, Andy, you, you gotta be clear about your characterization, we're collecting money for the overall 209 plan, which included part of this, it's not like we're collecting specific money for this section and other money for another section, so-
There, there is a fund of money based on each development paying a certain amount.
Correct.
If you take this section out, that, it, it's dollars divided by trips. So, all of a sudden, if you take this out, the dollar amount goes down. So, any difference between what people paid previously and what that new lower dollar amount would be technically, would be refunded, number one, but number two, the study no longer is valid. There's a disconnect between what's on the books versus what the-
Question.
Now moving forward with, so that has to be resolved.
Is it tempting to get into jeopardy because we're not gonna be building this?
While we're having this conversation, to make sure that we understand what past planning did and accounted for versus what's potentially gonna be approved and not seeing those plans through to fruition, because there's, basically have to take another look at it and figure out how to chuck and jive, so to speak.
And there may be other improvements, so if we revise the 209 plan, it may take into consideration other things that may be necessary.
Plenty of improvements, is that what you're saying?
Well, but, what Andy's saying is it's not in the plan, and when he, when you do, you adopt the plan, then he does a calculation as he's indicated, which comes up with the traffic impact number, so- Right, but, so the plan has to be reflective, he, the number, the traffic impact fee has to reflect the plan.
So, let me ask you something, when the planning commission reviewed the NV Homes plan, was it a deliberate discussion and decision not to make them do that extension through their development?
Well, years ago, we decided that the Loop Road wasn't gonna work, especially when the school district came in, and they wanted to put their fifth and sixth grade school there, so the Loop Road went away. And we decided that it wasn't worthwhile to put it in, especially going one way. NV Homes, NV Homes came in, but they needed to do it, they zoning changed, so we haven't really had a chance to see the whole plan and the planning commission, except for the last few months, we've got engineer plan, so it hasn't really been a discussion of them being able to put that Loop Road in.
But, but you, but, well, they have a conditional use hearing tonight, so in the review of that plan, nobody brought, I mean, not, this is not criticism, I'm just trying to get facts, there wasn't a discussion even last night, or the last time you had that plan before you, where the planning commission felt that this road was something that you wanted to see happen?
Correct, it never made it into discussion though, because we abandoned it years ago.
They recommend approval, though, didn't they?
Yeah, a, a, a year or two ago, the transportation committee did convene for a few meetings to discuss this, and we came to no resolution because there's not an alternative, at least that I'm aware of, to the, the Loop Road. Uh, that, that's worth studying.
Except for widening 322.
Pardon?
Except for just widening 322.
Exactly.
So, it sounds like we need the board to think about whether you want the Act 209 group to sort of reconvene and sort of take a look at what was versus what is, and what should be in the future, so that those funds can be allocated towards things that we'll actually try to effectuate, does that make sense?
Yep.
That's already on the list, that was discussed at the planning commission meeting last night.
Yeah, I just, I just didn't want plans to go forward and approvals to be granted, and people to say, "Well, wait, why was this never raised?" So, I'm the one that is raising it because I don't, I just want, I'm new to it myself, and so I was trying to catch up with what had previously been planned out, and then seeing that things are coming forward that maybe aren't achieving that, I just, that's a board decision, and that's a board, I wanna make sure you guys are aware of it, and you're shaking your head saying, "That's fine", it's, it's not as a solicitor or as planners, or even your planning commission, they give you recommendations, but ultimately, your guys' decision, so I just felt that that had to, thought it was an important discussion to have on both fronts, so, thank you for your help.
Just one cautionary note, I, I'd be a lot more comfortable in this situation if I knew there was some alternative to what's on the board so far. I'm very uncomfortable because I just don't know at this point in time that there's an, an adequate alternative, and that scares me a bit.
Understood.
The Reeseville Extension itself, with, say the Loop Road, obviously on the sketch plan we saw from NVR, does not depict the Loop Road, does the Reeseville Extension, that won't even really mitigate traffic, that will just be more-
It, it won't totally, it still has its benefits, I would not get rid of that. And Pendot is aware of it and is excited about it, to the extent that they can be excited, there is benefit to it.
I think you're breaking, you're breaking off at a point where you can head up Hopewell, you can head down Reeseville, you can head into Ca- I mean, you've got, you know-
Northbound, northbound left-turning traffic from 322 to Bonsville, and eastbound right-turning traffic from Bonsville to 322 can now use the extension, so it takes traffic out of that intersection.
Okay, and with the amount of traffic we have on East Ro- East Reeseville right now, I, I could see you having to do some pretty major improvements on East Reeseville too, coming through the township. Because that road, that's gonna be on through traffic, the road's not gonna handle it.
The roundabout is part of-
Oh, no, no, I, I love the roundabout idea, I mean, going from East Reeseville West, there's gonna have to be some improvements there.
Isn't that, isn't that roundabout essentially kind of void now because we issued a building permit to the homeowner on the corner, and we were supposed to-
It just changes what you have to pay him if you have to use his land, it increases the value of his property based on what's built there now, so-
And, and that sketch I showed you is just a sketch to give you an idea of the magnitude of the size. It can be shifted to accommodate, you know, reducing the amount of right-of-way that you might have to take from that property.
And Andy, what, that, that roundabout sketch, that's not part of the Act 209 stud, that was not, was that-
That's correct, that, that time, the roundabout was not part of it, that's something that has come into vogue later. There were, there was discussion at one point at 322, Bonsville and Hopewell Road, the SAVE 41 group down in Lower Chester County had come, come to get involved with this, and they suggested a roundabout to replace the signal that's there, except the traffic volume is so high that a two-lane roundabout, if not more, would be required. We don't have too many of them in Pennsylvania, people are reluctant and still learning about single-lane roundabouts. So, to come up with a double-lane roundabout, number one, was a tough nut to crack. Plus, the right-of-way required on the four corners was difficult to put our hands around, particularly with the pharmacy that went into the one corner, it would obliterate that property. So, and it doesn't get rid of the idea that you still need five lanes on 322 at some point in time.
So, if you were to update the Act 209 and change what the improvements are that you'd like to see happen, or the township would like to see happen, that roundabout could be part of that, is that correct?
It could be, or NV Homes could build it.
Well, and that's, so, it's important because they're coming tonight, so that's-
Well, it is one of my comments, their, their study, I think, looked at it at putting in multi-way stop signs at that intersection. And I, my comment was that they should look at it as, as a possible location for a roundabout, and that their impact fees might go to building that roundabout.
Did you tell us once, some time ago, that at this point Pendot, Pendot's position is that an intersection like that should be a roundabout, if it's not gonna be a roundabout, you have to prove to Pendot that the roundabout wouldn't work?
Sort of, the, 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 Pendot's policy now is if you want to, if you come to them to install a traffic light, a new traffic signal, such as the intersection of Bowlinger Road, if that's, that process started today, Pendot would come and say, "Why don't you go with a roundabout instead?" And you'd have to prove why the signal is better than the roundabout.
So, this, which could be four-way stop or two-way stop, they wouldn't have that same presumption?
Well, yes, they would, if, if we wanted to put a traffic light at this intersection, then they would say, "Show us, show us-"
If it's stop signs, that rule does-
Stop signs are a different thing because there, as you go through the process of warning different traffic controls, the stops, multi-way stop sign has a lower threshold for satisfying warrants than the full signal. So, we're going through that process of the, the time period between when the single stop sign that's on Reeseville Road today, how you progress forward to ultimately a full signal potentially. The warrants that need to be required, that satisfied to get to the signal, don't apply to a roundabout, you can build that at any stage of the process, so that accommodates traffic through the intersection better than multi-way stop signs, and it's a safer installation, it's just more expensive than putting up three stop signs, that's all.
But, but if the township supported that and wanted to use their 209 fees, that we would have to amend the 209 to be able to do that, is that correct? And what about in terms of the right-of-way that would be needed? Is there other people's land that would be needed that, that we haven't accounted for in any of our plans?
It, yes, most likely, but again, to some extent, it depends on how you center the roundabout in the intersection.
And I don't know if before tonight, I mean, I don't know what Andy's doing today, but if, if, you already have a sketch of that, is that something that you raised tonight, or is it something that we let the applicant go forward tonight and then continue the hearing so that your consultants can come back with some suggestions?
Yeah, I don't think we should, we should get their hopes up one way or another until we know 100% where we're gonna be.
But what, what we're talking about, if you're not talking about what I'll call the, the western end of the Loop Road, if you're talking about just the eastern end of it, NVR Homes property would not require any right-of-ways, it's not, they're-
Oh, it's not their land, okay.
Yeah, I think in my comment letter, it's two separate comments, one comment is with respect to the Loop Road, and a separate comment is, uh, somewhere in their report, I think they discuss what to do at Bonsville and Reeseville Road, and my response to that, or my comment to that, was that they should look at putting a roundabout in there as an alternative to all-way stops, and that possibly funding from their Act 209 fees could be used to pay for it. So, that's a separate comment, neither one has been addressed yet by their traffic engineer.
But there's no right-of-way involved on their property to accommodate-
Not for the roundabout.
So, Andy, is it, and obviously we can talk about this at the hearing, but do you think that that kind of an issue can be something that gets vetted and finalized during land development? Or if, if that's something the board wants to see happen, does that substantially affect the plan and that you wouldn't wanna have it go forward with conditional use?
The roundabout doesn't affect the property itself.
Okay.
So, that's an outstanding comment, as a condition of approval, perhaps one of the conditions is that they explore and/or implement the, the roundabout at the intersection. And then that can, the design and how that actually gets done gets handled through land development. But the, I guess the condition would have to be established now, because once you get to land development, I don't think you have a real strong hook to make them do anything.
So, I guess the board needs to have better plans to understand exactly what properties are impacted and how much right-of-way and all that, I mean, if that's something you're looking to explore.
And I'm just thinking out loud here, okay, Reeseville Road, if we don't wanna, if, 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 once you get through, if the said roundabout happens, and you need to feed traffic back up to 322, here's, here's in my opinion, the only options you have. You have a, one, at the, at the bottom of the township, coming up this way, exiting out here. You have two, Bonsville, you have Bowlinger Road, and you have three, an easement right, or, or something with, with Weaver track on, on their property closer to the intersection of, of Reeseville, right?
You mean direct, direct access to 322?
Direct access, so, so it wouldn't necessarily be a through-traffic for all-traffic, it wouldn't be publicized as a cut-through, but you could essentially have three different spots where you could feed traffic back up to 322 off of Reeseville Road without inconveniencing everybody at the same time.
Well, again, two parts that, first of all, access to 322 would most likely have to be at the signal for Brandywine Villa, Brandywine Center. That, that could be a private access, I suppose, but I'm not sure how you handle that with Pendot, because how do you keep traffic that's going back and forth on 322 from turning when they, it looks like it's a valid driveway? So, there's some issues with making that just a, a private entrance for the development and accessing a state highway at a signalized intersection. And then the, the other part is, I lost track of what I was saying. Uh, the, the, the three, the three points of access, you're still dumping that traffic onto a state highway system, and, and NV Homes still needs permit for access to Reeseville Road, which is a state highway. So, we still get muddled up in this whole issue about fixing 322 and Bonsville Road.
Yeah, I'm just thinking out loud, you know, the only other, the next intersection up would I think be Swineheart further up Reeseville Road where you could dump out onto 322.
Well, that's all stuff that, that the 209 committee would have to evaluate.
I just don't wanna lose the opportunity while you have a developer still pushing through, and I know they're on a tight timeframe with the school district to try to get plans approved, so I thought, better get that process going so that you can take that into account as you're reviewing their plans.
Can you submit his sketch of the roundabout for tonight's meeting, just as a caveat, say, "Hey, listen, this is a distraction, it might be going with our 209, you need to think about that when you're doing your development, and it might be a condition of that."
I, I think you can make it a condition of the plan that they resolve that intersection issue, and then we're sort of kicking the can down the road, but at least you start the process.
Yeah, and I don't wanna have them, there's been so much meetings with them on the zoning amendment that I wouldn't wanna, oh, surprise at a hearing, hey, by the way, this is something, you know, I think that that has to happen in the same vein that it's happened in the past. So, if Andy has given direction to put that plan together, the board needs to understand the impacts on properties and right-of-way that are necessary, and then if he has the, you know, consent of the board to move that forward, then you set, have a meeting with them and, and discuss it.
Isn't tonight just occasional use just for age-restricted community?
It's for the development that they have proposed based on the rezoning, but it's, it's, it's the zoning to allow the use of the age-restricted community, but, you know-
It's not the land development.
It's not the land development, but I just don't want, you know, if you're gonna, a lot of times- lot of times, you'll come with a plan, and they're asking you, and the decisions we typically do, say that, you know, what you're approving is basically substantially similar to the plan presented. So, just wanted to make sure everybody was understanding what that meant with respect to, you know, the one portion of the Reeseville Road extension and then the further ones, so.
Yeah, this is where you get to attach the condition that they have to do the roundabout.
Okay. But they don't have any, but what about the site control? How can you make a condition for a developer to commit to something where they don't have site control?
We did it with Pulte and the-
And that's where you are, exactly. You did it with Pulte, and now, and the condition was that, obviously, that they can't acquire the right-of-way, the township has to.
Yeah, we, we, so we've done, and we've done it multiple times in the past.
This ha, yeah, this happens in townships, I get involved in these things everywhere, that with the old 33-foot right-of-way roads that PennDOT and many townships have frequently, you need right-of-way just to put in a left-turn lane or something like that. And you put the onus on the developer to make a fair offer for, to acquire the property, but if the developer or the property owner is not willing to go along with it, the fallback position is condemnation. But you make sure the developer pays for the condemnation cost. The township is just the party that's acquiring the property.
Okay.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
And so do you want Andy there tonight? I guess that was the other thing we weren't certain about, did you want both Nate Klein and Andy to be there?
Well, we have his-
Review letter?
Yeah, his review letter, so I think that gives us enough to make a condition that they satisfy those comments.
Okay.
I would think.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you, Andy.
Okay, we don't have any subdivisions and zoning applications this morning.
Can I just insert something, though? And I just want to double-check and make sure that May 2, in the evening, was the date that's preferred for the Baptist Church conditional use on the daycare. Do you want to start at 7:00 PM? Is that an appropriate time?
I think so.
Is that okay? Okay, so we'll go ahead and get that advertised. Thank you.
And I guess going back to Scott and Kristen for the ordinance task force update.
Okay. Excuse me. At the Planning Commission meeting last night, the, the commission recommended that the board authorize the submission of the Wireless Communications Amendment to Section 399-101 Wireless Communications 2, the County Planning Commission for their Act 247 review. This amendment to the existing section on wireless communications is due to an FCC ruling which took effect January 15 of this year, where they created a fixed timeline for approvals, which they call a shot clock, of, I believe it's 15 business days from the time of a complete submission. If the submission's determined not to be complete, the shot clock stops. There were also some additional roads that were added to our limited list, because one of the concerns, or one of the issues that the FCC has is that municipalities have to provide for a reasonable accommodation for, excuse me, the locations where these mini-cell towers, which is basically a 50-foot or less monopole, to be put within the road right-of-way. So we, those two issues were part of what this amendment is, is designed to do.
Scott, was there discussion at the Planning Commission about the roads that were suggested? Because Kim Benz in my office, the Section 6 of the ordinance talks about, and again, this is primarily for, like, DAS providers, small, they're called small wireless facilities, where they're not your typical, you know, huge tower, they're usually co-located already on a utility pole, and they can be done. And the way this was drafted is they have to be 50 feet or shorter within your right-of-way.
Correct.
And they typically like to go on roads that have a lot of volume of traffic. And I didn't know if there was discussion about whether these roads were appropriate roads, or did the Planning Commission like this road, you know, listing, or were there additional roads that we missed?
No, they, they agreed with, I know, I did it twice. Hopeall Road's on there twice.
Okay.
But, yes, I discussed that last night and indicated the roads that, that I added, which were Bollinger Road, Creek Road, which is a dead, dead air area anyway. Let's see, Hopeall Road was on there, but I did it twice. Little Washington Road, North Guthriesville Road, and Rock Raymond were the other roads that I added, primarily for not just the volume of traffic, but also looking at coverage because of the, the rolling hills that we have in some parts of East Brandywine.
If I may, Bollinger Road does not have any existing telephone poles on it, though.
Right, so that was the other thing to look at, is that if you're allowing these, then potentially, you're going to have somebody come in and want to put, you know, a utility pole-type structure to erect these. So is that something the board's comfortable with? Because right now, this is saying, by conditional use, they'd be able to do that. Conditional use, although you have to have a public hearing on it, it is an allowable use, provided that the impact of it is no greater than you would expect. So, you're basically making a legislative decision that that would be appropriate to put a 50-foot pole on that road for purposes of this type of facility. I just want to make sure the board is comfortable with that and on-board with it. And the other, the other thing that I want to just real quickly mention is the state of the law on this is rapidly changing, and we have to keep our eye on it, because right now, in the Commonwealth Court, the DAS providers, for example, Crown Castle, the ruling is that they are considered a public utility. And as a public utility, they don't need your zoning approval. So, right now, Crown Castle has been willing to work with municipalities and abide by your ordinances. That may change in the future, or there are other providers beyond Crown Castle that may say, oh, we're a public utility. And if the Pennsylvania Supreme Court affirms that, they may be able to do it even if, you know, the only thing they'll need from you is a permit that you would give to PICO, which I don't even know, Matt, if you give PICO permits. So, so I still think it's good to have it within your zoning, because you are having some of these providers agree to cooperate with you. But just want to throw that out there.
And Matt made the point that we don't have any poles along Bollinger Road. Even though we anticipate that they would most likely want to add this to an existing pole, even if there are poles on one side of the street, they wouldn't be prohibited from putting their own tower up on the other side.
That's right.
Yeah, so.
Unless, we could add that in. We could add that to the extent that there is a pole already on, on the road that would provide them the necessary coverage. I mean, I think that usually, they're able to get lease rights from the utility companies to put these facilities up. That may be something to think about.
But I think, from the discussion at the ordinance task force, we may have to tweak this later, but we're sort of under the gun because we're already past the deadline. So, I think we need to get it, at least get this ordinance to the Planning Commission for 247 review. I think the only question is, at least at this point, if you want to pull Bollinger Road off the list, because there are no poles along it, and then we'll deal with the pole issue down the road.
Okay. So what do you, what's your advice?
Certainly do that.
Take Bollinger Road off?
Okay. I'll make a motion that we submit the proposed Section 399-101 Wireless Facility Ordinance to the County Planning Commission for Act 247 review.
I'll, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for that. The, the next, excuse me, the next issue is twofold. The Planning Commission is recommending that the board approve the, an amendment to the definition section of our land use code, as well as Section, where is it? 399, it's Article X, Commercial Service Limited Industrial District, subsection 399-51, Use Regulations, by adding subsection 16 to permit the retail sale of consumer fireworks within that, that zoning district. Currently, we do not have a specific district for that. So retail sales could go practically anywhere. So it was, it was decided that the Commercial Service Limited Industrial District would be an appropriate place to locate that. Currently, there are no, the, the law that was enacted last, actually, it was 2000, fall of 2017, which became effective in January of 2018. It since has been revised to, to not permit temporary or tent sales for consumer-grade fireworks. But it does require, as with everything else, that we have someplace to locate the facility in the township. So we decided on the CSLI district. The second part of that defines the definition of what are consumer fireworks. And then, to that, we also have a standalone fireworks ordinance, which basically references the, the law that was, was provided by Act 43 of 2017. So that doesn't, ordinance, standalone ordinance goes into our, our codes, the East Brandywine Township Code, but it's not a land use code specifically. The other amendment to 300-17 definitions and 399-51 of the CSLI district would need to go to the County Planning Commission for their 247 review. The other, the board would just need to authorize the advertisement of that.
Yeah, and the intent of the amendment to Chapter 160, I guess it's a brand-new chapter. This was actually an ordinance that we had put together for some of our other municipal clients that I had shared with David Sweet, your planner. And the idea was that the, the law, similar to wireless facilities, the law on fireworks has recently been changed and then further modified by the Commonwealth Court. So, so that everybody understands what the laws are with respect to the use of both consumer fireworks, which are the type that you would, you yourself as a homeowner would get for July 4, versus display fireworks, which is what a municipality or you'd see at the Phillies game. There's already some regulations in place in the fire code. The second-class township code says that you have the authority to require permits for the display fireworks, which are the larger fireworks. So we thought it was a good idea to put, you know, the distinction between the two types of fireworks and the different rules that apply, because you do have some jurisdiction over it, but to codify that all into one chapter so that people understand what the rules are when, when you're coming to East Brandywine and, and trying to do either the consumer fireworks yourself or trying to do the display fireworks. So that's the purpose of this.
And we have had those issues where people will get fireworks from out of state, and that they're not legally permitted to possess or transport into the Commonwealth. So this helps address that. So what I'm looking for is authorization to, again, send the Definitions Amendment and the adding that use to the CSLI district ordinance sent for 247 review, and the other standalone ordinance authorized for advertisement at some future point.
I'll make a motion that we submit the proposed amendments to Section 300-17 to the County Planning Commission for Act 247 review.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we advertise the adoption of the ordinance creating a new Chapter 160 fireworks.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
And Jason brought up a point, and I think he's right, that I, and I don't know, Scott, if you'd heard this, but when the state law was passed, I think there was a mistake in how they defined the quantity for one of the display fireworks. I know I saw some back-and-forth from PSATs on that, so I want to just double-check that to see if that, how that ever got sorted, sorted out.
Two grains isn't much bigger than a sparkler.
And I, and I think there was. I know I saw some, like I said, back-and-forth on there had been a mistake in how the state law had the definition for that, so we'll take a look at that.
I just, I just used what you had because I thought that included it.
No, I know, and I, and I-
Can you get the 500?
We have, well, we have to follow what the state law is, but I need to understand what the state law did in response to recognizing there was mistakes. Like I said, I know I've seen emails.
Isn't it 50 grains? Where is it here?
We'll check it.
Okay.
I don't know the quantities, I just know we need to check it.
Scott would know.
Scott will have?
Okay.
Is there anything else before public comment?
No, we have two resolutions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. Resolution 07, 2019, supporting DCNR grant application for Bonsville Mill Park.
We got Resolution 6, too.
Yeah, so let's do them both, I guess. Resolution 6, 2019, Disposition of Municipal Records, and East Brandywine Township, East Brandywine Township Police Department.
I'll make a note, motion we adopt Resolution 6 of 2019.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
May I interrupt at this point? Just to clarify, a legal, a legal question. We have some materials that we would add to the stack to be destroyed, Kristen, that are not the only version. So, for example, the township recently engaged ScanTek to scan materials from the Applecross Development. The paper versions of those records, we would like to add to the, to the destruction pile. It's not included in the resolution to be destroyed, and there's still a digital copy, so we're not destroying a record. But I want to make sure it's not inappropriate for us to destroy those.
I don't know off the top of my head. I mean, if you still have them available on your electronic version, then I don't think you are destroying them.
Yeah, we're just getting rid of the physical copy.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
And how, how much is it? I mean, are we talking bucket loads, or?
That, that, that file room is just about, that, that closet door right there is chock-full of, of, of Applecross material. And that's, that's duplicate that didn't even make it to ScanTek.
Well, if you're just, just, if you're just destroying duplicates, you still have the file, so.
Correct. I'm just pointing out that, that there's, there are some materials that's going to go in the shredding machine that are not outlined in the resolution you just passed, and I want to make sure that we're not.
Or the ones that are outlined in the resolution that they just passed, do you have a backup of those as well?
No, those are permanent destruction.
Yeah, so then that's different. That's, that's the point.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Pardon the interruption.
No problem. And then the Resolution 07 of 2019, supporting the DCNR grant application for Bonsville Mill.
I'll make a motion we adopt Resolution 7 of 2019.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public comment on agenda items.
Public comment? Mike Wagoner?
241 Jeffress Road. This has to do with the estates of Downforge. Last night during the Planning Commission, this did come up as a topic of discussion. And we came to the consensus of, this is a land development plan that's under development right now, and they need to go with the reviewing engineer. Pinoni is our reviewing engineer. They need to get their landscape architect, who will go back and verify that they actually put the plant material in, to go out and be party to this. Luke does not need to take on any additional task at this point, and he should not really be involved. If anything, he should just be like the go-between, as the township, as the township go-to guy. We have consultants who will go out and work with the homeowner to move trees where they need to be. The problem with getting a third party involved is when they go back and they try to get their escrow money, and they have to justify that they put the material in, and we have numerous people who are out there and said, yeah, you can do this, you can do that, we're going to run into a conflict of interest when that comes, when that comes to play. So if anything needs to be done with the land development, it needs to go to our consultant. The consultant can then document that. The consultant can then document that and then let us know what they're deficient in or what they're not in. If they don't put all the trees in, they're not gonna get all their escrow money back, and they're gonna want that, and they're gonna want it in a timely fashion. The fact that we have dedicated roads and we have undedicated roads doesn't matter. They signed the agreement to develop. They need to put all that material in. The fact that they did an upgrade builder's package is just a sales promotion. Part of our, our ordinance does not require them to do foundation plantings. That is for them to sell their buildings. If they choose to put in more, that's fine, but it shouldn't take away from the land development issue. It's a land development issue. If they want to change the plan, they have to come to the Planning Commission, get our recommendation, then they gotta come back to you and get your approval because they are, they're changing an approved plan. So to ask Luke to go out of his way to work with these people, I think is asking him to do a little bit more than he's really required to do. This is a land development submission that should be taken care of by our consultants.
I, I would agree with that, and I would also, uh, add to that, that it should be on their dime, not-
Yes, exactly.
So, because, um-
Panoni should bill them directly or bill the township, and we'll, and we'll bill them.
I, I don't think what we discussed is contrary to what you're saying.
True.
I think what was discussed was let them come up with a plan, a marked-up plan, and then my thinking was that it would be referred back to our landscaper or Panoni and-
They should be involved firsthand.
If we're gonna amend their land development plan, it's gonna go back through the same process, Planning Commission.
Well, and if they, if they don't want to go that direction, they can do the same thing we did with Heatherwin. We had Tom Kummer go out and work with each resident that had an issue with the screening and where they wanted to put their plant material. As long as it went in the locations that it was prescribed, they could have moved it anywhere they needed to, as long as it went, A, in the screening, B, it went in the street tree program, whatever it is. That's why I suggest that Panoni be involved further up front before we get to a point where we're gonna have not 76 trees, but 176, or we're gonna have 2,000 trees that they don't want. Eventually, as we all know, after everybody gets their CO and the township's gone away, you can do whatever you want to your property. So eventually, they can go out and cut the street trees down if they actually want to. Our guarantee is only for 18 months, and after that, you know, we have, really have no respite to be able to do anything with that. So again, I'd say, you know, less on Luke, more on our consultants, and as you said, Kyle, you know, charge them. You know, they've created this issue, not us. But they're asking us to solve it.
But I think at this point, what the discussion was just that Luke was gonna convey-
Okay.
The ball's in their court, let them come back with it. I, I wasn't anticipating that Luke was gonna be out there surveying-
Knowing Luke and why he likes to volunteer for stuff, he probably would.
And it's interesting because I think one of the property owners that was here the other night said that the, uh, I, I don't want to say the developer, but whoever was putting the trees in actually said to them, well, just let them put, let us put them in. When it's all done, you can do whatever you want, basically. Same thing.
See, but unfortunately, unfortunately, there's a disconnect between the developer and the contractor installing it, because what I got out of that was a lot of times they were putting the trees close proximity to utilities. And as I explained in the meeting, the utilities aren't always go where they go on the plan. The trees unfortunately do because that's where the guys are measuring off.
Right.
So that needs to be worked out with the consultant.
Thank you, Mike. Um, any other public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, uh, I don't believe we have any notices. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Some moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.